The regular session of the Oregon City City Commission to order on September the 20th, 2023. Mr. Riley, would you please be so kind as to call the roll?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Morrow?
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
I am present. Uh, thank you so much. So would you all please stand and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And item number three is that I did not get a proclamation completed regarding another important month here, but I'm just going to basically talk about it for just a second. So September is also deaf awareness month. And one of the things I found out when researching this for another organization where I talked about it was that across all age groups, approximately 600,000 people in the United States of America are deaf and more than half of those are over 65. Unfortunately, is probably the largest population of people that are not recognized in this country, and it's a serious problem. And the United States Census basically states that the state of Oregon, there are approximately over 188,000 people who are deaf or have serious hearing difficulty. And that's about 5% of our population. And the reason I bring this is that Oregon City has tried to do a good job in accommodating people who have hearing impairment. We have devices that we can use, although we're still fighting this room. And unfortunately, it's going to be that way, and I sincerely apologize. We are trying continually looking at this, and I think if we build another building in the future, we will design it with the system first and not put it in afterwards. But you know, you don't know these things. But what I have also discovered is that one of the issues that we deal with is that this class of people, and it's now become a public health problem in the United States, is not recognized, and there is a lot of discrimination against people who are hearing impaired. And so you get things like from the general public saying, "Well, it's something you just have to deal with, or it's not a big deal, and people should just try harder or speak louder." Well, that's not really the issue. And part of the problem is, is that as a local government and as other governmental agencies, they should be doing more. So there was a commission on the deaf and hearing, hard of hearing that was created by the state of Oregon, and they are trying to address some of the issues that have come to light. And one of them has to do with, just a few I want to mention, is that infant screening is something that's pretty critical. And then you need to follow with later detection, and then you have personal device coverage. So apparently, the Oregon law now requires insurance companies to cover cochlear implant, but that's a single one. So how do you, you know, how do you deal with the fact that you need two of those? Foster care has a lot of problems in terms of children who are deaf who end up in that system. And then there's the educational structure, and a lot of times students' needs are not recognized. And so you have learning problems with language, you have attention, and then they get put in special needs classes, and maybe they just needed to be recognized or screened for hearing. The School for the Deaf is often presented to parents as an option of last resort, and it's ignoring the fact that that should be the option for first resort. There are preschool policies that are now in place that will help parents to make sure they don't miss an opportunity to interact with other families with similar experiences. And then the impact of language delays is also another problem. As we know, as people grow older, our hearing gets more and more impaired. Not everybody does, but a lot of people do. And we do have a number of people who come to these meetings who are not able to hear what we are saying, particularly on the screen and out there in the audience. So it's just something I wanted us to be aware of. And like I said, it was, the President of the United States declared September as deaf and hearing impaired month. So thank you very much for indulging me with that. And I know my friends who are in that category probably certainly appreciate it, and so does our community. So we have, nobody signed up for citizen comments, I believe, tonight? All right, so let's move on to presentations, and it's my pleasure to ask Steve to come up along with the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Kendall Reed, who will be giving us a report on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee's annual report. And it's been a year already since we did this?
Yes.
Oh, dear. Okay.
Mayor, City Commissioners, it's my pleasure to introduce our Vice Chair, Steve Williams, from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. He will share an update of the committee's activities and the achievements from the past year. Steve?
Thank you, Director Reed. Yeah, I'm here this evening to give you a brief overview of what is called the PRAK Annual Report. Tradition dictates that the PRAK provide this report. However, the reality of the items that I'm going to cover this evening is that we're going to be discussing is that they're mostly administrative construction or deferred maintenance projects directly associated with the ongoing and important activities of the Oregon City Parks and Recreation Department and staff. It's a perfect scenario for me because if you have any really difficult questions, you can direct them to Director Reed, and he'd be glad to answer those questions. I'll begin with the Veterans Memorial Plaza restoration. The first and second phases of the restoration are complete. I don't know, I'm sure all of you have been to the Memorial Plaza. I went there the other morning. It was all by myself, a quiet sunny morning, and it's quite the moving place, quite the tribute to our deceased veterans. The materials and labor for this project were provided by Mutual Materials, Horizon Distributors, The Wall, Pacific Landscape Services, Inc., and Bud's Crane Service. Additional items such as the flagpole and the Armed Forces podium were donated by Triver's VFW 1324, the Oregon City Women's Club, and my favorite, the Oregon City Optimus. The final phase of this project will be completed in 2324. Next, reference the Parks Master Plan, which I believe you've been briefed on either once or twice possibly. This is, the Parks Master Plan is a collaboration with Proz Consulting and was started in April of 2022. The goal of the new plan, Parks Master Plan, is to address a broad range of parks' needs and activities for the next 20 years. One of the things we on the PRAK have been briefed several times on this effort as well, and one of the things that struck me was the input from the public, how positive it was with regard to the Oregon City Parks and Recreation Department. Having participated in state government for some time, I don't see that kind of support often for government agencies. It was nice to see that kind of support. The planning and project continues with consultants, next practice partners. I'm not sure the exact timeline on that. Director Reed may be able to tell us. The next Parks and Recreation hosted the first volunteer recognition party on July 25th, 2023, which was attended by nearly 100 guests. I unfortunately was unable to attend, but I've heard nothing but good things regarding that effort and the interest in continuing to do it into the future. I know you're all aware of this, but without active committed volunteers, much of the success we have in our programs would not be possible. And I would point out in the report, I just love the picture of Mayor McGriff presenting Tom Muldoon, the Volunteer of the Year Award. Nice add to the report. Now I'd like to highlight several parks-
He was very surprised. He was very surprised and delighted and a little shy.
Yeah. It sounded like it was a very good event. Now I'd like to highlight several parks' planning and capital improvement projects undertaken by the Parks and Recreation Department. I know that you've been briefed on the Clackamas Park Master Plan. And throughout the planning process, numerous community and Clackamas Park users provided abundant input on a range of issues, from the boat ramp development, RV park changes, and national resource management associated with this unique and valuable park setting. It's my understanding that we're in the final stages of plan development, which, when completed, should allow us to begin prioritizing implementation measures. I hope that effort will come to fruition soon. Next, the Mountain View Cemetery restroom renovation project was started in May of '22. The new facility is located adjacent to the parking lot and office at the Mountain View Cemetery. The original restroom lacked ADA compliant access, had limited capacity, and had outdated fixtures. The new facility has corrected all of these problems and added dry storage area for supplies and equipment. Funding proportions of the project were offset by funds from ODOT, FEMA, and Sportcraft Landing lease payments. I'm not normally one who tours facilities of this type, but I will tell you that is a very beautiful, well-constructed facility and will serve the community long into the future the way it's been designed and constructed. It's a very impressive facility.
Had you ever been in the other one? Have you ever been in the other bathroom?
No, I have not been.
Oh, you're lucky. Yeah, it was kind of gross.
Okay, okay. Well, this one, this one will avoid any issues you may have, I think, most of the time, with vandalism or anything else, the way they've constructed it. It's very impressive. The Parks and Recreation Department also utilized available resources to repair the mausoleum roof at the Mountain View Cemetery. Allowed for expansion of services through the Oregon Patrol Contract, which is patrolling our parks' facilities. They did repairs to the drainage at the Tyrone S. Woods Memorial Dog Park and West Good neighbor project improvements at the Cove River Access. Next, I'd mentioned the Oregon City was among 36 communities in Oregon to receive and plant a Ginkgo tree designated as a Hiroshima peace tree. This effort, as I understand it, was in 2020 and was done to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. A dedication event in collaboration with Oregon City Planning was held at the end of the Oregon Trail Turbine Center on April 29th, I believe that was 2023. I would encourage you to, I don't know how many have gone and seen that tree. It's on the south end of the trail facility. And I was reading about the peace tree being, basically, these trees came from seeds that had survived the blast of Hiroshima. That's fairly impressive when you think about that. And our tree appears to be doing well based on my non-professional experience with trees, but it looks pretty good. In a shout out to the Pioneer Center staff during this last fiscal year, they delivered 33,000 meals on wheels, provided approximately 6,000 rides, offered almost 300 hours of case management, made 255 reassurance calls, provided programming resulting in almost 6,500 visits to the center. Very impressive program and effort, at least from my perspective. I would draw your attention to the donation levels and revenue generation numbers outlined in the report, most of which would appear to have increased in recent years. In 2022, '23, there were approximately $4,000 in scholarships for swim lessons and camps provided to over 40 participants. Funding for the camp scholarships comes from the Parks Foundation and the Elijah Dean Huff Memorial Camp Fund. Through the tireless efforts of our aquatics and recreation manager and local businesses like Oregon City Subaru, they were able to host the first environmental resource fair. And they're working on, with help of Soul Flags Art Center and a generous grant, are preparing plans for five new cultural events to highlight Oregon City's diverse talents and interests. And finally, the report outlines a number of facility improvements or deferred maintenance projects for '23, '25. There are projects anticipated at the Aquatic Center, the Carnegie Library, the Irma Tinger House, the cemetery mausoleum, the community development facilities, and City Hall. With that, that's my brief overview of the report as was presented to you. I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions and any hard questions to Director Reed. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Steve? You have to give him one hardball question, just, you know, just so he'll feel like he got his money's worth. I think you're off the hook. I think you're saving all those hard questions for Director Reed.
You did ask him about the bathroom.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, yeah. I think you're good.
I'm done. Okay.
Thank you.
He's gone. That's bad. Bad boy. All right, so next we are going to talk to some other staff in the Parks and Recreation Department about the Irma Tinger House.
I'm getting you ready.
Well, while they get ready, I'll do an introduction. It's my pleasure to introduce our aquatics and recreation manager, Melissa Sebastian. She has done an outstanding job this past year with increasing programming and attendance along with the Friends Group. And tonight, she's here to inform you of some of the success that she's had with the programming at Irma Tinger House. Melissa?
Thank you. And can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
That's perfect. Just checking. So yeah, Melissa Sebastian, Aquatics and Recreation Manager, here to talk about the success that we have had with programming at the Irma Tinger House this past year. I'll be going over our attendance, the programs that we have done, really diving into our field trip program that we developed this past year and some of the things that we're planning for the future. I do want to make sure to recognize that though I'm the one here and speaking about this, that a lot of the work that was done with all of these, the credit really goes to our recreation programmer, Holly Swager, as well as the Friends of the Irma Tinger House, especially our Chair and Vice Chair Cheryl and Dave, as well as the rest of the members, and then the people that we have gotten to work with, with the Clackamas County Historical Society this last year. So as far as the programs and attendance, I know we talked about in the last presentation, the volunteer party, but there's a reason why the Friends of the Irma Tinger House got the volunteer organization of the year, and that has to do with the growth that took place with attendance from our programs and events this past year. This last year, our attendance numbers grew 66%. And this last summer, this last quarter, the attendance grew 18%. And a lot of that is due to the people that come in for the monthly displays that are put together, the rotating exhibits. There's usually at least one or two events happening at that site, and that comes, you know, together with our recreation programmer and that Friends Group and all the collaboration that takes place between all of us. Those percentages are purely from people that have come in for either tours or events. That does not include the numbers from our field trip program. I did want to keep that separate just to show the true difference because if we did add those, it would obviously grow that percentage significantly. But it really is comparing, you know, apples to apples as far as who came in for what to that site. As far as the programs that we have going and that a lot of our staff works on, we have an adopt an artifact program. This is something that we really tried to launch around when the pandemic was happening and really focused on it again this year, and this is when it really took off. We had four of our artifacts adopted. And essentially what that is, is a way for people to help support the house in a different way. They get their little name by an artifact, and then they get a certificate for it and what we call an artifact sheet, so they get to learn about the artifact and what they've supported for that year. And then there's different levels that they can choose from, and depending on the level, they get extra stuff with that as well. This was our fourth year doing our Preserve Our Past Art and Poetry Contest, and we had 10 people that submitted art pieces, and we had 49 poetry submissions. This was a lot higher of a poetry submission this year than past years, but it was a little bit down on the art side this year. And we are going to be looking at this program and expanding it and doing a little bit of a revamp of this program in the coming year. Our field trip program that we developed this past year, we had 453 students come in. I think there was another report that said 433, but we had an additional 20 people come in this summer from camps that visited, and that's continuing to grow. We're having people already reach out to us to schedule field trips for this year. And then our drop in tours, we had 1,133 people come through the site this past year. And then this is a list of a lot of the different events that have taken place in the site. It's not a full and complete list, but these are primarily the events that we've worked with the Friends Group on. Every year, these events take place. The ones that were new this year were the Lantern Tours. And this coming Saturday, there is another- the lantern tours, um, and this coming Saturday, there's an event that is instruments and the music they play, um, that Cheryl has organized, and there's gonna be talks at eleven o'clock and one o'clock, one o'clock this weekend. Um, and again, um, these are the type of events that really bring people to the site, and even the events that happen every single year, they're different in some way, there's always something new that's there, especially, um, you know, heritage holidays and heritage days, it's always, um, new and exciting and continues repeat, people to come to that site and bring family and friends, which, um, is great. And then as far as our field trip program, so this is, you know, if it's not the most successful thing we've done this past year, it's definitely at the top of the list, it's been very exciting for us. Uh, we have always invited people to come in for field trips at the site since we reopened back in twenty-eighteen, but the truth is, we just don't really have the capacity for what a lot of the school groups are looking for. Um, you know, a lot of schools, when they send a fourth grade class to a field trip, they want to send all the fourth grade classes, and they want to go to one spot and bring buses of kids. And with our capacity at the Erma Tinger House, we can't really do that. Um, and so we started having the conversation with the Clackamas County Historical Society, which, uh, runs the Stevens Crawford House, which is right next door to the Erma Tinger House, and we started talking about developing a program together that we could help market and bring more schools to those sites. Um, and essentially what that created, and between our two sites, we were able to offer it where we can take these large group of kids and rotate between three to four sites, and have these groups of anywhere between seventy or ninety-plus come, um, and that was, um, really what grew that number. Um, the other things that we did to really help market this program and make it where educators in different schools wanted to come to the site, is we made sure to align it with the Oregon Department of Education requirements for fourth and fifth graders. Uh, we made sure to really promote that they're not just coming to one heritage site, they get to park their bus and walk out and see two different heritage sites from two different periods of time, and so it's expanding, you know, the level of history that they're learning from being able to go to both of those sites. Um, and then again, it just, it made it really easy for schools to bring large kids and know that they're all gonna be, you know, at this corner, so, you know, two of the sites were Erma Tinger House and the Stevens Crawford House. The third site that was used a lot was the Pioneer Center basement or the lawn area outside, that's where kids would go and eat lunch, because a lot of the field trips happen around lunchtime, and they're looking for a space where they can go and have everyone eat lunch. And then with, um, some of our larger groups where we needed to come up with a fourth place to get, you know, split them into bigger spots, we were lucky to have some of the library staff step in and, um, help out for one of those, and they got a tour of the library and learned about some stuff there. And then there was one field trip where they were able to go over to the McLaughlin House and go there too, so really, um, had a lot of people and a lot of different, um, staff helping these go on. Um, the other person that helped us a lot with these field trip, trips was one of our friend members, Dave, he really helped out a lot at the Erma Tinger House with that program, um, and getting additional things added for youth there.
Um, see the groups coming?
Primarily Fridays, um, every so often Thursdays, typically when a Friday's already booked out, so, and the houses, you know, only open on Fridays and Saturdays, but if someone wants to schedule a different day than that, then we make it happen. So. And then, um, just wanted to give a preview, you know, I think four hundred and fifty-three doesn't sound like the biggest number, but when you compare where we came from, for the four years we were open, we had a hundred and seven people come in all four years combined. And obviously, you can see the two years this year, we had a pandemic happen and some rebuilding, but to go from that number to four hundred and fifty-three students within our first year of developing this program is really great. Um, and we did have schools that came, you know, from Salem and Gresham and other areas, so, um, we are, yeah, again, just really excited to celebrate that. And then as far as plans, you know, for that coming year, we're continuing to, you know, expand our partnership with the Clackamas County Historical Society with this field trip program. We're not, you know, stopping and saying this is good, there's still, you know, more things to add. One of those things that we're working on, um, with some of our Friends members is, um, putting in a Hudson's Bay store exhibit in the site, that's really gonna help with our youth programming as well. Um, and that's one of our projects that we're looking at for this next year. And we meet with, uh, the Director of the Clackamas County Historical Site on a monthly basis. We will also be continuing, uh, meeting with the Friends Group every single month, um, and last year we did our first, you know, kind of annual strategic planning, uh, meeting, and that's, again, what helped us, set us up for successes last year, and we'll be doing that again within the next couple of months, we're still working on finalizing a date for that. Um, and then like I stated earlier, we are looking at revamping our Preserve Our Past Art and Poetry Contest and doing something a little different with that, um, and potentially, um, making that a, yeah, different program. And then upcoming events, uh, again, there's events that are taking place in this house all of the time. Um, we have this coming Saturday, instruments and the music they play, there'll be educational talks at eleven AM and one PM, I know that one of the people talking is Ray Gordon, and so it should be a really good event to come to. Um, if anyone can't go, we still have musical instruments on display throughout, um, this month for people to stop by and see as well. We have a history mystery event that's taking place on October sixth and seventh, and this is an event that was, uh, developed by our Friends member, Dave, and his wife and friends, and it's essentially, um, set up like an escape room, um, and we just opened that up for registration. Um, the sixth is almost full, and, um, the seventh does have some tickets left. Our Friday Night Frights event on October thirteenth sold out a month in advance and already has a pretty long waitlist, so, um, I am encouraging people, if they want to attend it, to let their name onto a waitlist, because it really gives me an idea of how many people were interested in coming to this event for future event planning. Huh? Friday Night Frights? So, um, we are, it's Friday the thirteenth, we're gonna have the Erma Tinger House and the Stevens Crawford House available, and then, um, Rocky's one of our tour guides for that, but we will, um, be having him and William Beckner and a bunch of our other Friends members and people involved, it's essentially gonna be a combination of tours and, um, some ghost stories and some investigation type pieces. And then, um, it also involves going over to the Hive Social, they just opened up the hardware store, and so that will be the third location, they'll go over there, and there's gonna be a themed cocktail for the event and some additional talks for that, so. And then that was, yeah, a really, uh, an event that I think a lot of people are really proud of, just because it is helping support, you know, our departments, but the Friends Group, and Clackamas County Historical Society, and the Hive Social, so it's been a really good partnership to work through for that. And then, uh, in November, we will have our Veterans Day event, and then we will be doing some lantern tours again that month. And then, um, just want to say, yeah, thank you for letting me come and talk about all these successes and what we're doing at this site, and just want to open it up for any questions or comments.
No questions? Okay, no questions, okay.
Um, Melissa, you're doing a great job. Um, I am so excited, um, and as you all know probably more than you need to know how much I'm connected to this house, but, um, we saved this house, which was the city's obligation to do, and, um, a lot of people question that, I think, in terms of the expense, but saving our history is costly sometimes, um. But what we're seeing now is I think, um, a lot of what people were questioning, would it ever happen? Um, I have not seen the involvement of the Friends Group with this house to the level it is now in decades. Um, I have not seen this amount of people, um, signing up for events, going through the house, um, the partnerships that are being made, um, you know, since probably the early, uh, probably the late nineties, early two thousands. Um, it's working, um, and the collaboration between the city now and the Friends Group is, is developed a relationship that's working. Um, the partnership with the, um, Clackamas Historical Society, Historical Society is, is amazing, um, and I hope that continues, and then, as you said, with certain events, um, nearby facilities that are not necessarily those two houses, like the Hive or the Library, others, other areas, that, that's such a, you know, when the Carnegie Center and, you know, having the library, there's such a, it's always been a focal point in the center of the city to have that little neighborhood there where people can walk back and forth and attend these places, so I, I just want to thank everyone for the work, and I also want to thank some of the people that you mentioned tonight, the, um, McCloskeys, um, Cheryl, um, herself, Cheryl, uh, but then the McCloskeys themselves, um, and some of the other Friends members that have literally been working on that house for thirty years, um, who have been doing it since I was doing it, who gave up many times, many, many times, um, but then fully give up because they always had a love for the house, um, and a love for the history and the potential, and you see that coming back, I remember in, I remember being in high school working with Dave, um, and watching him work with kids coming through the house, um, and, and seeing that, um, that fun coming back and, and the, the excitement of that, so I want to see this continue, and just to be clear, any moment that I've, am connected with the Erma Tinger House through fundraisers, all the money goes back, I don't take a dime for that, um, obviously, because I can't, um, for one, and I would never, um, but there's a lot of people volunteering their time outside the Friends Group for little events here and there, and I just hope that, um, continues, so thank you for your work on that, thank you to Holly also for her work on that, um, because it's, it's, it's working.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Melissa, for the updates and the, uh, and the presentation you gave us, I just specifically want to heap praise on the work that's being done to bring in more students to these sites, um, having gone through K-12 in Oregon City Public Schools, I cannot tell you one time when I stepped foot in one of those houses as a part of a field trip. And, uh, looking back on it, uh, realizing how much of a missed opportunity, opportunity that was, um, it just makes me very happy to know, uh, that we're actually capitalizing on the many resources, the many cultural and historical resources we have, uh, in this community, and I'm looking forward to seeing how, um, how that, uh, programming grows with the Clackamas County Historical Society, and of course, uh, the more bodies that there are in there, the more we need to make sure we're keeping it, uh, keeping the maintenance up to date, and so we'll be looking forward to having those discussions down the line too, so thank you.
Anybody else? Carla, you've got two minutes.
I'm Carla, Oregon City, and I'm also here on behalf of Friends of the Erma Tinger House, on behalf of Cheryl, she wanted to let-
Cheryl Rice?
Yes, Cheryl Rice, and I, she wanted to praise, um, the city and cooperation on all the involvement and events that we've worked together with this year successfully, and, um, we're really excited for the future and what will, the cooperation between the city and us, and we're excited for these future events, and we just are very grateful, so thank you.
Thank you, staff. All right, we have, um, the consent agenda, and I personally don't want to pull anything, but I had a quick question. On seven A, that's the, that's one of our gas stations?
That's correct.
I was just kind of curious why you didn't put the business name on there, but, um, yeah, so I-
It's just a change, change of ownership.
Yes, it's what I figured, it was a change of ownership, and then on, um, what was the other one here? Oh, on number, um, C, we had some, we had some further discussion about this, um, at a city commission meeting, so it's the same topic that we talked about with, regarding the opioid, sorry, can't even say it, opioid settlement dollars that, that Mr. Conkle brought to us, correct? Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, do we have an adoption of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, we adopt the consent agenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Morrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, we don't have any public hearings for tonight, but we do have, um, some items on our general business. If you're okay with this, I want to move just really quickly to nine C first before we get to A, um, Mr. Conkle?
The commission.
Um, because I think it's gonna take the shortest amount of time, and I want to make sure we have plenty of time for the other two items.
But people are here to speak, and so I, or at least to listen.
Yeah, there's nobody here to speak on these, because-
Or at least to listen, and so I prefer that we just do it as a topic.
Same people that we've made wait many, many meetings for many, many hours.
Okay, so nine A, Mr. Reed?
Uh, Mayor, City Commissioners, um, tonight I'm here to provide an update on our discussions around the Memorandums of Understanding, uh, for Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer. Um, on February seventh, the City Commissioners discussed the implementation of a new fee of three dollars per hour for use of each field. Uh, the staff was directed to meet with Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer to discuss revisions to the Memorandum of Understanding, uh, for approval and implementation. Uh, on August tenth, myself, the city manager, and park staff, uh, met with Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer Club, uh, and their representatives to discuss field usage fees, uh, monthly billing, field reservations, cancellations, process, and season logistics. Uh, we worked closely with Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer Club to ensure that agreements were fair and provided a clear understanding of the relationship between the two parties. Uh, MOUs and meeting minutes were provided to, uh, the sports groups, uh, for review and signature. Uh, Oregon City Soccer Club returned the MOU, uh, with notes, uh, which, uh, were attached. Uh, the meeting minutes, uh, had additional notes. Um, Oregon City Youth Sports requested that we make some edits, uh, to the MOU, uh, those edits were done, uh, emailed back to them, and then returned to us, and those were provided tonight. Uh, we are recommending that all revenue, uh, that's brought in from these agreements, uh, be dedicated to maintenance and capital projects, uh, for the sports fields, um, and staff is recommending that the city commission approve, uh, the Memorandums of Understanding, uh, for both groups and provide direction on the fee.
And if I could, I could just say that I do want to thank, uh, the representatives from both Oregon City Youth for, Sports and Oregon City Soccer for taking the time to come meet with Kendall, myself, and park staff, I think, I, I hope they felt it was as constructive as we did in working through the Memorandums of Understanding, understanding the logistical concerns that they had, as well as the ones that we had in finding that, that area where we could work together to address and hopefully meet the needs of both, uh, of, of all the organizations involved, um, we did meet with them separately when we went through that process, so we were able to have specific conversations about the needs of each organization. Um, you know, the one thing that we did not discuss was the fee. Um, you know, that's really a commission decision to make, um, but everything else was on the table to look at in those MOUs, and we hope we captured, uh, the concerns that they brought forward, um, and I, I believe we have, um, and so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
See a number of representatives from OC Youth Sports here, if there's any way it wants to come up and speak, I think it'd be an opportune moment. I do see, I, I agree with your summation, it looks like a signed agreement by them with the exception of a to-be-determined on the fees.
What did you say, to be determined?
It says TBD, to be determined on the fees, section ten, paragraph ten. Section 10, paragraph 10, NB, B as in boy.
So, we just, we did, we did invite them, both organizations, to attend tonight to make sure that they were aware that this was moving forward, and if they'd like to come up, we certainly invite them to.
Do you, if you wish.
And welcome their comments.
So.
Uh, yeah, we did, we did have an opportunity to-
Would you still have to say your name for the, sorry?
Scott Costanzo, been a member of the Oregon City Youth Sports Board for-
You know who you are, but-
Years.
People in TV land might not know who you are.
Uh, yeah, so, we did have a meeting. I, I think it was productive, like you said. There's a lot of just different things scheduling-wise that, that we discussed. We feel good about that. You know, the only, the only thing I'd like to speak to the commission on is, you know, still the, the fees, right? We understand that we, there are costs associated with what we do, but we also feel like everything that we give back and the work that we do basically offsets the costs that we have. You know, looking at, if, if we couldn't afford to pay those fees and have it just leave the fields altogether, what would they look like? Right? I think we know the answer to that, because that was what Field 4 looked like. It was totally unplayable. It's just not something that the city's ever been asked to do and frankly can't do. So, you know, we feel like for the amount of time and effort we have to put into those fields every year continually, and the equipment that we had to buy to specifically work on the infield's to make them playable and safe for our kids, we kind of feel like that should all be considered in, in looking at a fee. So, we're not opposed to paying it if that's what it's decided. We just feel like, you know, there's, there's so much that we give back, the amount of hours that we spend, and all the equipment that we had to buy and what we do every day, that, you know, like that fee would, would be just as well waived, acts for what we ask for.
Steve? So, you used the words "we had to buy."
So, I mean, just for us to drag fields, we have to, every few years, we're going to have to buy new ones because they wear out, they get damaged. We, we use them frequently. We had to buy a bigger field drag because of the, the red clay that's at the Wesley Lynn Park. It's very difficult, you can't just use a regular drag, it doesn't work. Field's basically concrete once you get into the middle of summer when we're playing. So, we had to buy a larger field drag with a spike and all the different attachments that make the field soft and playable so that the kids don't rip their legs open and, and those types of things. You know, and again, we, we buy all the bases, we replace the home plates when they break. We, we've donated our own money along with the Metro grant to put turf down to make it even more playable more, more times of the year. You know, all of those things we, we do for the, for the good of the kids in the community and, and for people to use, right? We've had, I've seen people out there having parties and playing on the field, and we're not asking for a reimbursement on the $40,000, $50,000 that we spent on that project, right? We, we did it for the, for the community to use as well as for us to use, so, you know, and we're going to continue to do those things because it's the right thing for, for the kids in this community. And, you know, yes, we looked at other cities that charge fees, they also are providing turf, right? If, if you guys had turf fields and lights and all the things, we would absolutely pay that fee because that's expensive, it's very expensive. We don't have it, doesn't look like it's ever in the plan to have it. We keep losing fields, you know, we, we lost, when, when this was built, we lost a field. Schools are, are closing and we don't have access to those fields. So, the amount of kids coming in with all the houses being built, we're doing the best we can to keep what we have in, in good working order for the kids to have fun, be safe, and be good productive members in our community.
So, you know, I understand the many contributions they've made that go unrecognized, and I, I know we talked about the synthetic turf. I think it goes unrecognized at this point in time. Is that, that group was instrumental in building the snack shack. They actually got an award for it, which maybe we've forgotten over time. I don't, I have no problem with the group, which they've always done, providing sports equipment, safety equipment, bats, balls, bases, that's their function. But if they had to buy another drag, my question would be, could we possibly provide them with that piece of equipment? Can we own it and let them operate it since it's performing a function for us? Is that a future possibility, rather than them being out of cash in hand for a piece of equipment?
Anything can happen with money, but what I just want to explain, he, he brought up a great fact with the turf fields. If we had a system in place 23 years ago, when this fee was established, where the money that was coming in for sports fields that would be dedicated to sports fields, we would have money that we could invest in that equipment and more turf fields. He mentions these other sites that have turf fields and lights. They charge fees because they need to reinvest that money into the infrastructure, but we didn't do that. So, we're at a deficit, but we're willing and we're dedicated to work with both groups to improve the sports fields, the state of the sports fields, to collaborate with them, to make sure that they have what they need. But you'll also recognize in the fee schedule, other jurisdictions charge fees for those services. They don't just offer those services, they charge for those. So, if you want to do those services, there's an additional fee attached to it. So, I just think we have to wrap our heads around, yes, we can do more, but it's going to take that investment, it's going to take revenue in order to buy equipment and invest in turf fields.
Everybody up here gets that. Thing is, we can't, we can't undo the past. We, we are from this date forward at all times. And we've talked about comparing our jurisdiction to other jurisdictions that have all these things and the relative costs and the fees they collect, and I think that's a continuing conversation to be had. The important thing about this agreement, I haven't seen any, but you stated that these, these fees collected are, apparently they'll be captured in a specific account for these fields to, for these only, and that, and that, that makes it more tolerable. So, the fact that this is signed and everything is agreed to with the exception of the fees, that just leaves it up to this commission to say, what's the fee number? And then this thing is put to bed, because it's signed on the 6th of this month by the organization. But I don't want to discount the contribution that organizations like this made and the fact that they, in our own way, run a, run a operation at, for a little over $100,000, which is something we could never do, puts forth opportunity for children, including scholarships. So, we don't need to go revisit all those conversations of the past. We have a signed agreement with one exception, and we need a continuing conversation about what do we want to do in the future. But for now, we've got this with the one exception of fees, which we need to deal with. Then we're done.
Any other comments? Same topic or different topic?
Topic.
Okay, we're, so, hang on, do you have a comment about-
Oh, no, he can-
Oh, go ahead, okay. I, he, he wanted to speak, so I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, go ahead.
No, please. Go ahead.
Uh, my name's John Benjamin, I'm the president with the Oregon City-
A little closer, please.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm used to just yelling, that's the way it goes.
And talking loud so we're making-
And the kids, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, be careful here.
Uh, so, my name's John Benjamin, I'm the president with the Oregon City Soccer Club. I've been involved in sports and onboards for the past 25 years. I've been dealing with Parks and Rec since Larry Potter was here. I've been through Scott and then, and John, so I've been around, I've been around. We have, we have about 900 kids right now, we have 96 teams for our fall season. We have, during our spring season, we had 540 kids, which was about 56 teams. We utilize every ounce of field that we possibly can. We charge a low fee, as low as we possibly can because of the parents and the way things are today, it's hard to make, make ends meet and to survive. So, we're always looking out for the best interests of the kids. Rest assured, this is for the kids, this is 100%. My little tag at the end, at the bottom, it says "it's for the kids," because that's what this is all about. I do not like to pass on fees to the kids, or to the kids' parents. They always question it and they wonder what it's for, so I do the best that I possibly can to address those concerns. We just spent $25,000 last year for new goals. We have always provided the goals at the parks. I've been in the process right now of removing old goals, getting them out and replacing them with new goals. We had a Metro grant a couple of years ago, and we were going to put in concrete pads and storage areas for the goals and stuff, and as it came out, I was going to be the only one doing it. I could not give volunteers. Volunteers are impossible to get anymore. I let that grant go back. It was really sad because I worked really hard to get that done. I have, in our meeting, we talked about, I'd like to still do that because things that have come up is the weeding in around the goals and the extra movement of the goals and stuff. Well, I want to make that easy. I work out at Fisher's Mill, I do Fisher's Mill. So, I spend more time at our sports field, Fisher's Mill on Fisher's Mill Road, than I do at home. My wife hates it. She went home, but I stay there. So, if we could get that taken care of, that will help on the weed eating and the maintenance. I work hand-in-hand with the guys in the maintenance with city parks and the school district. There are times when I personally grab our mowers, we had to buy two mowers, I'll grab my mower after work, 5:30, I'm off, I head to the fields and start mowing. I will help them out any chance I possibly can. I have no problem with that, because like I said, it's for the kids. The fee is tough. We give about 20 scholarships a year during fall and probably about 10 to 15 during spring. And if kids need shirts, shoes, whatever it is, we will help with that, we're, we do that. We do purchase balls and give each coach total equipment packages to go out and do it. So, it, it's a lot of money, and we don't want to raise our fees, we don't want to keep asking for more and more money. I don't like it, I don't like doing that, and I feel guilty when I have to do it. So, like I said, we will, we will do everything that we possibly can to work with Parks and Rec, to do whatever they need done. Have to, but the fee, fee wasn't there, that would be nice, but I also understand, coming from, working in the field that I work in, that there are costs for water and bathrooms and field maintenance. I understand that. We all, baseball, and us, we take care of Fisher's Mill, and we spend a ton of money out there to maintain those fields. Equipment that we buy and purchase to make those fields good for the kids. That all into consideration and-
Thank you.
What, what I don't understand is, what does a soccer club get in exchange for $3 an hour? You get a piece of grass that we have to cut and water anyhow. I presume you line it or your club lines it?
We hire out. I, I did the lining for 20 years-
Yeah.
And I ran through all the kids, and those kids are now adults. So, we now hire out to have that done. I, I, I can't do it anymore, it's too much.
I understand that, and I, you know-
We hire, we hire out all the fields to be lined, yeah. We hire a lot of stuff out.
What's the financial impact to your organization of a, a fee of $3 an hour? Do you happen to know? You, you may not be the treasurer.
Uh, yes, well, it's, if you went 900 times three-
$2,700.
$2,700, yeah. It's, $3, it doesn't seem like a lot, but to a lot of the parents, that's what we have to face. I mean, both us and baseball, I mean, we have to go to the parents and ask, and some parents can't afford it. It's plain and simple.
What does a child have to pay to play in your organization?
Uh, it starts at 85-
85?
85 to 125, and that's at high school. And then, we just started a new program this year, which was a huge success, which is for three-year-olds, we're calling them the future pioneers. And that just took off like crazy. We've got 65 kids, and we were only expecting 40, and there's like 25 on a wait list.
What do those little people have to pay?
Uh, we just charge them $50, and that is a flat fee, that doesn't cover any, that just is for them. They get a ball, a jersey.
A ball?
Yeah, they get a soccer ball. They all get soccer balls, we give them soccer balls.
Individual, kids get individual soccer balls?
Every, every child gets a soccer ball, yeah. And we're also doing, we're just talking about it, and we're like, let's get them medals too. And we're going to provide medals for those kids.
Yeah.
Um, it's just all those extra things, but, but they don't pay for anything else. I mean, their fee, nothing comes back to the club on this when it's done.
Many of your participants are Oregon City residents, and how many of them are not?
I would have to guess 99%. I do, I think there may be two kids from outside. But see, that's tough too, because the school district doesn't like that.
Zip code?
There, yeah, there's not many. Most of them are, the vast majority is Oregon City.
And again, I'm not going by the zip code because we have-
Yeah.
The zip code goes to Redland, and that's not in the city limits.
Yeah, no, everybody's within city limits, from Redland through up here.
Redland's not in the city limits.
Oh, no.
It's a 97045, that's why I said city-
Oh, we are 97045?
Yeah, I said city limits, not 97045.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because our city, our, our zip code goes out to, to Springwater Road, and that's not in the city.
Right.
See, my thoughts on $2,700 are, that's, that's anywhere from 23 scholarships for high, high school kids to 55 scholarships for little people. What do I care more about, getting $2,700 or taking care of those people? That's such a small, see, I'm still at zero on the fees, and we'll have that discussion whenever it comes up again.
To answer your question then, I guess with, with, within the city, I would probably say there's 800, 800 of the 900 came up in here, in, within the city limits.
There's no fee differential between inside the city and outside?
No.
I'm just trying to get, I, this is, it's the question I was going to ask the, the other folks too, but I'll get that later.
Well, I think they know the answer.
Yeah, I know they do, so, okay. Yeah.
Sure. Um, thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate it. In meeting after meeting, that, the many meetings that we've had on this topic, I think we've reaffirmed the value that we see in Oregon City Youth Sports. That's especially true for me, and Oregon City Soccer. That's especially true for me because growing up here, I participated in those. Over the course of this, I was told that I needed to get all of the background facts and the research about why we are where we are, and I did. And I even attended the Oregon City Youth Sports Tournament. Andy Smith, who's on our budget committee and is also involved with Oregon City Youth Sports, invited all of us, and I attended, and I, I had a good time there for a couple hours. I even ran into Commissioner O'Donnell afterward when I was walking back to my car. I did my research, I did my research.
I didn't get my invitation, so that's okay.
Uh, well, it was in the emails, and I saw all of our names written in. And so, I, I thought that was a great opportunity to go out and watch the games and talk to some people that were involved there. And I also looked at what other cities do and came to the conclusion that Oregon City is an outlier with the current system that we have. I really appreciate the work that the staff has put into these negotiations, but as was stated in the end, the rate needs to be set by the city commission, and I hope that we can agree tonight on the compromise figure of $3. I would just remind us all that we're a government, we're not a used car dealership, we don't negotiate individual property tax rates for every homeowner, we don't negotiate every permit to every builder that comes to the planner's desk. We set the rates, and that isn't coercion, and neither is this. And so, I know in our last conversation, there were questions over the, I think the fiscal impact being like $12,000 a year, I, I know there were questions over that, but as was already hinted to by Kendall, as elected officials, we're tasked with thinking toward the future. And so, Commissioner O'Donnell is absolutely right, we can't go back and institute a fee that would have gotten us to the point where many other jurisdictions are- other jurisdictions are, uh, deferred maintenance-wise, but we can start now. Um, just think about that twelve thousand dollars decade after decade. We could have turf fields all over this community. So I just look forward to, I know this is a small drop in the bucket toward the larger funding discussion that I hope we have about either a park bond or something else, uh, because I think that's desperately needed in this community. Uh, but for now, um, this is where I stand. I, I'm heartened to hear as well that with this small amount of twelve thousand dollars, uh, which do, will have a cumulative impact over time is that there were concerns also over its administrative costs, uh, and I'm heartened to hear that there are no additional administrative costs, uh, because, uh, it's pretty much par for the course for what we're already doing. Uh, and so that doesn't take away from that as well and hearing that it's going to be dedicated, uh, to those capital improvements. And so, um, that's where I am.
Are we, uh, we're like...
Yeah, you don't have to stay up here, sorry. We're not gonna, you, you could leave anytime. I didn't want to keep you on the hot seat, sorry. I'm so sorry. I thought you knew you could just go. Thank you.
So I have set the monetary amount, not, not the, not the fee amount, but the total amount of money that it's gonna generate. I, I set that aside because as Commissioner Morrow just said, whether we have these fees or not, we have a much, much bigger problem and a much bigger discussion that we need to have with ourselves and with our community. Um, and, and this isn't gonna help with that. So, setting aside the twelve thousand dollars or whatever it is, there, since the beginning, three things that I was concerned with. One, I believe and did and still do that there is an economic value to being able to reserve a field which gives you the right to tell another group of individuals who may already be there that they have to leave because you have it reserved. Same thing for a park, a picnic shelter or whatever it is. If I wanna go have a picnic, I can go do that. But if I wanna be able to say, you have to leave your picnic, you have to leave because I have this reserved, I think there's an economic value to that. Number two, I think we need to recognize the contribution that, that these clubs do and it is significant. But if we're talking about a ten-dollar fee for other groups or other individuals and a three-dollar fee for these, that's a seventy percent reduction, which to me is a substantial recognition of the contribution that they make. And the third thing I wanted to see was that the money would go to field improvements and we have that in the MOUs. So, taking those factors in account, I'm in favor of the three dollar an hour fee.
Any other comments, Mr. Smith, you're the last?
I don't think I'm a car salesman. Um, I try to make decisions that are right. That's not the easiest thing and what really bothers me, and I, I could probably speak for another ten hours on this, because there's only some, there's only a few people in this room that know what it's like to work for free for the city of Oregon City for thirty years. And not send them an invoice for doing the fields and not send them an invoice for toilet paper at the Erma Tanger House for twenty-five years or not sending them an invoice for weeding. There's only a few people in this room that know that. And they're not people that are asking, well, why did you have to buy equipment? You had to buy equipment because you needed to. Because you had, had the field ready tonight and the city wasn't gonna do it. That bothers me. It bothers me just as much as the group that came here when I first was a commissioner that says, we'll pay for the, um, we'll pay for half of the starting blocks if you redo the starting blocks at the swimming pool and the city says, oh, it's not a priority. They were gonna pay for half of it. I don't get it. I, I really don't get it. Um, and, um, so, I, 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 I'm zero, zero, zero. And, um, and that's all. I, I can talk more, but start sending invoices to the city for the work that you're doing.
Okay, I think we've heard from all the commissioners. The re, the request is to approve the MOUs, uh, with the modifications, uh, and you want us to take up the fee separately?
Yeah, people need to know how this commission is gonna vote.
Okay, alright, so...
Also need to know that we subsidize other aspects of this community's operations, whether it be the playhouse that we just gave them five thousand dollars or others that we subsidize that are very specific, so keep that one, go ahead and vote, let's, let's be on record as to how we each stand.
What playhouse are you talking about?
When I just went to see the, uh, art, we gave them five thousand dollars at the community college.
Oh, okay, sorry, the, the theater over there?
Yeah, the theater.
Yeah. Was it, it was our gra, it was a grant, right?
Yeah.
Yep, we didn't just give it to them, they...
Well, I think a grant is a give.
Yeah.
And they gave it to them.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we have a motion?
Uh, um, doesn't matter which one you, we discuss first, which, which motion?
It, it's, it's up to the commission, we can approve them individually, we can prove them, um, combined.
Uh, I move to establish a three dollar per hour fee for these two groups.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do you call a roll?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Morrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Absolutely not.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I didn't speak at the end of everybody's comment, but the vote is, um, I am not unsympathetic to the two groups. Um, I've been a, a sport parent. What I'm concerned about is us falling further and further in the hole. Uh, I know that the fees that we paid for my son to participate in basketball and swimming It just, we made, we made it work. We made it happen. Um, we paid it, he wanted to do it. Grandma and grandpa helped out, uh, a little bit because sometimes that's what you get to do, you get to talk to grandma and grandpa. And, uh, we did that as well. So I'm not unsympathetic to the work you've done. As a former city employee, I know about the work that you've done because I've been out to those fields, I understand that. Frank was right, we can't go back. But I do know from living in this community now since nineteen-eighty-eight that I wish we could go back and, and do things the right way and you wouldn't have to be doing all these things and we will get there. But I agree with you, Mr. Mitchell, that we do need to, we did ask a question three years ago on the survey and I am firmly, uh, supportive of us looking at going out for a parks bond because the community rates parks very high. I don't want you guys to have to do that. I want you guys to be able to do other things. The city should be doing it, but the city wasn't able to do it and has never been able to do it. And I hope that by the time I retire from, uh, my second and third careers, that we will be able to do this because it's important. Um, the other communities, I know they had to start from somewhere. They didn't always start from where they are now, but I do know that the other communities, not that we're ever gonna catch up with them, but maybe with a parks bond we will. And we need to do a lot of things. We are trying to be all things to all people and maybe that's what parks are. So hopefully we will be coming to you in the future to help you, help us support a parks bond because I don't want you guys to be doing this. I want you guys to be able to go to the games and enjoy yourselves and not worry about who's lining the field, who's, who's rolling the, the turf machine, who's doing this, who's doing that. You should be able to go there and enjoy it with your kids. I spent, I can't even tell you how many hours manning the snack shack for my son's schools. So I've been there, done that, I know that. I've been there, so I understand. So thank you for coming and I appreciate everything that you do. I mean, just because we voted one way or the other doesn't mean that we don't support you what you do. Because it is important.
So, thank you for the vote and clarification on the fee. Could I get a motion on the actual MOU itself?
Uh, I will move to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented with Oregon City Soccer Club and Oregon City Youth Sports, um, with the TBD language replaced with the recently approved three dollars an hour.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Morrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, let's move on to the, uh, next item.
Well, here's, here's what I know. Everybody gets a vote in the matter. And when people are running for reelection or election next time, remember how they voted. Because you guys are a big voting block, so speak your mind then.
And after twenty years of giving your free time and money to the city, are you really gonna support a parks bond? Well, that says a lot right there.
I, I don't disagree with you. We do need it, the kids need it, the grownups need it. You guys are getting tired. Alright, we have the, uh, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas River Water, CRW, and the Oregon, and not the Oregon City, but Oregon, well, we are the Oregon City, excuse me, um, Oregon City and relating to the provision of water service to the Trimble Creek Concept Plan area of the city of Oregon City. Is that Mr. Conkle or is that Mr. Lewis? Welcome back, Mr. Lewis. Like I said earlier, I've missed you, so...
River Water District or CRW, um, it's, it's a agreement similar to many of the other agreements we have with Clackamas River Water. Some of you may, um, know and some of you may not know, we've got agreements for the HOP area, which is the, uh, Holcomb Outlook Park Place, um, neighborhood. We've got an agreement for McLaughlin, um, for Leland and McCord, for South End, for Glen Oak, and we have a, what we call a remuneration agreement with Clackamas River Water. And now this Thimble Creek Agreement that's before you today. And I just kinda wanted to share for the listening public, I know you know this, but many, many metro cities work with water districts or water authorities or their neighboring cities to, um, to cover the drinking water needs of their community. And, um, this, this agreement helps do that. Um, Oregon City being on the southerly edge of the metro area, we, we work pretty exclusively with Clackamas River Water when it comes to distribution and making sure, uh, citizens inside and outside on this side of the river, um, get, um, water. Oregon City and CRW utilize South Fork Water Board, um, for water treatment, um, hall, uh, for all the areas that are served through these various, uh, service agreements. So the service agreements we have are really more about distribution of water as opposed to treatment of water. This agreement, um, won't change that, so, uh, South Fork Water will continue to provide the water that we need on, in, in areas that are covered by this agreement and the other agreements that we have. Uh, this agreement has been many years in the making. Um, we've talked for years about how to serve the Thimble Creek area, um, or what used to be called Beaver Creek Concept Area, so, um, same, same area. The IGA is what I consider a backup plan. We may or may not, um, act on this agreement. Uh, the city can provide the water that's needed for the development of the Thimble Creek area, um, particularly because we now have a financial plan as to how to build the capital out in the area, out in that area and fill our ability to serve the area. So that, um, has changed, um, because while we've always acknowledged that we could serve that area, how we funded that was in question. So with the, with the WIPPI funding that helps, our big issue out there isn't flow necessarily, it's pressure. So, um, w- we've got another area just across the street from this, this area, um, that we serve, it's called the Fairway Downs area, we serve that with a pump station as well. So this is, that, that would be an interim solution until we, uh, our master plan calls for a reservoir in the future, so we would have that, uh, in the future. But for now, um, the, the solution is, um, what we've talked to the development community about is, uh, utilizing Oregon City water, um, with the pump station. This agreement would be a secondary solution to any new development that happens out there and it would be a short-term solution. But in the interest of land use, uh, future land use decisions that are gonna come before us, um, we needed more clarity. I think, um, the developer needed more clarity on, on how that was gonna happen, so this agreement provides that or helps to provide that. Um, the agreement in your packet was approved by the CRW board on the fourteenth of September. I guess I was encouraged that the agreement acknowledges the desire to build out water supply in an orderly, efficient and non-duplicative manner. Oregon City and South Fork have years of concept and facility planning that outline how the city will serve this area. And the public vote, uh, of Oregon City citizens on the WIPPI indebtedness has provided, uh, financial certainty that the guarantee, that guarantees we can fund the water distribution capital program needed to realize the Thimble Creek area. Should this agreement be put into effect, the IGA includes standard terms of agreement on coordination of water supply, um, expectations for water supply, flow rate limits, it provides specificity about Oregon City and South Fork fees and charges. It also provides for a Clackamas River Water pass-through charge payable for each lot, utilizing the water provided through a CRW system should that happen. The agreement also establishes a timeline to ensure the city delivers a CIP or a capital improvement plan in a timely manner and covers a range of standard provisions. We recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute the IGA. I can cover more of the details of the agreement if you'd like, um, but I thought I'd stop and look to you for questions.
I have one question.
Yes, go right ahead, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I know there's a thousand dollar hookup fee and we don't, we're not involved in that in any way or shape. It does not diminish our SDCs or South Fork SDCs, correct?
We would collect it, but it would be a, an additional fee. We're gonna come back to you with a...
It does not reduce our SDCs.
Does not reduce our SDCs.
However, if we fail to accomplish what we have to, there's an additional seven hundred dollars, right?
There's a, there's a five-year timeline on that thousand dollar connection fee if we're not able to, if we still need to rely on a CRW source.
So, so we're committed to avoiding that.
We're, we're, well, I'm working hard to avoid utilization of the agreement at all. But yes, if we had to enact the agreement and utilize CRW, uh, water, then the five years is the next threshold, timeline threshold.
You feel confident that we can have our infrastructure in place in five years?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm wondering whether we have the cart before the horse. Doesn't the South Fork Water Board need to approve this? Or is the city gonna just tell South Fork that you are going to provide this water?
South Fork's the provider in either situation.
Yeah, in either situation, in either situation, uh, the South Fork Water Board provides water to the area, you know.
CRW is wheeling the water for South Fork.
And South Fork has the water right to serve, uh, this area as well. So South Fork is, um, is interested in seeing this agreement passed as well.
Well, but maybe the director is, but I don't know if the board is. I don't think you can speak for the board. We haven't seen this.
I don't think this is an agreement for South Fork to, to, to...
Just responding to him saying South Fork supports it.
Oh, well, we got, so, when we, uh, we did get, uh, agreement from Rewrite, the, the South Fork Manager and their attorney, we didn't get it through the board, but we wouldn't typically take a decision like this to the board because the long-term understanding is gross.
Are you saying you would not?
We would not, not.
You would not, okay.
Because...
And the only reason we, we were... There was, um, in, in working with South Fork, we wanted to make sure that they provided their, their input onto that deal. Out as a courtesy, there was no obligation for the city to do that, but it was as a courtesy to make sure it was... but it was as a courtesy to make sure it was understood as well as. Sure. So we reached out as a courtesy to make sure that as our partner, South Fork was aware and any questions or concerns that they had, we were able to address. But this is an agreement about providing the service, not the delivery of the water that's being produced.
It wasn't a courtesy, it was a direction of this commission to consult with South Fork and their attorney, their water attorney. So that part is done. Since three of us sit on the South Fork Board, the question would be, do we want to postpone this until we sit as a board, which will happen next week? Next week. And that's it. Whatever your direction is, I'm fine with.
A member of this commission, not as a member of the South Fork Water Board. I appreciate the fact that the staff was amenable to having South Fork's attorney and their director review this because I think it's important. If we are partners in this and South Fork is providing water, it would seem to me that we would want some sort of concurrence because I think this is a fairly big step. And I do appreciate, sincerely appreciate the fact that you said, Mr. Lewis, that you don't intend to use this unless it's a last resort. Because that addresses part of my concerns as a commissioner. However, since we are partners, we are partners owning the water district with the City of West Lynn. I think it would behoove us to have the South Fork Water Board either concur, I mean, at least acknowledge that this is happening. I believe I mentioned it to the director that maybe that should be on the agenda for a brief discussion. Because I think it does affect the South Fork Water Board.
I know the director asked if I could attend a future South Fork Water Board meeting. I mean, maybe I'll look to carry a little bit on this, but we've been through a lot of facility planning and concept planning for that area. There's no other water provider, and by that I mean source water, that has the ability or authority to really provide water in this area. So, and this would be precedent-setting, I think, in that we've got these, this is one of your urban concept areas. So the Beaver Creek Concept Area was, I know there's legal findings about water provision in terms of distribution and supply. And those are older documents now. The Beaver Creek Concept Plan is probably 10 years old now. I don't quite remember. But that was, that decision has come and gone as to whether or not South Fork is going to be the water provider. There's no other water provider that provides the supply water for this area. I'm not sure why we would.
You're telling me right now that CRW is going to be providing the water in the interim if this agreement is executed?
But in this case, CRW gets that water from South Fork. So while this area would get, so that whole south end, the area even outside the city that CRW serves today, all that water is provided by South Fork Water. Now, they pump it and they move it through the CRW lines. And that's what this scenario would utilize some of that water that they buy from South Fork Water and they pump it through their system to the same area. They pump it further. They pump it to the Beaver Creek, their Beaver Creek Pressure Zone, which has the pressure and the storage. But we've got volume there too. We just don't have that pressure and storage. So, but where that water comes from, it comes from South Fork Water. The same water.
South Fork says we don't want to give water to CRW's. Go ahead, Rocky.
Can you tell me that CRW is not mixing their water with our water?
As far as I know, this end of town has no connectivity other than.
It's well water?
Of their water, of their treated water.
Well water?
Their well water is off. They don't use their, they've got one well, which is off of Redland Road that would be connected to this system that has had problems in the past. It is not in use.
So we know where they're not mixing water?
We know we're not mixing their well water with this water. And we also know that the water that they treat on the other side of the river, there's not an interconnection today.
And they are 100% paid up?
Ooh, I don't, I've never heard of a delinquent on Clackamas River Water bill. I don't know. That's never been expressed to me as a problem. But I didn't, I don't know what the account balance is.
I just think the mayor brings up an interesting point. I mean, there's more than one entity that has vested interest in South Fork and maybe as a courtesy to those that should be run through the South Fork Board on the 27th. And maybe it's just a formality.
Maybe it's just information.
Yeah, but I mean, they are shares in the water provided. It's kind of an oversight that maybe would have been good to have done that. I know we've reviewed the document and I know it's been reviewed by Chris Cream, the attorney, and proved in every way. I just feel we do have partners in that operation and our counterparts in West Lynn. I would have liked to have said this is what the intent is. I didn't think about that till this moment. It is, and that's why you're leading and I'm just a follower.
That's why I'm following and everybody's leading.
From the years of service that I've had with the organization, the impression that I've got from this district manager and prior district managers, I haven't interacted much with the board other than through the city commission. In fact, I think if I were to attend a board meeting at the South Fork Water Board, whenever their next meeting is, that would probably be my first meeting in that board meeting. That said, the impression that I've always gotten from previous, the previous manager and this manager is South Fork is interested in maintaining its water rights and it's in the business to sell water, to produce water. And so the actions like this that help ensure that South Fork provides water, provides as much water as it can to growth areas in Oregon City, is high on their priority list. And I've always understood that to be a, the board's position as well from past history. Now, maybe that's changed, I don't know.
Okay, well, just because I'm, you know, I'm not wearing two hats right now, but I have the other hat. I would like to, this is not. I don't think that postponing this for one more meeting, our first meeting in October, is going to break the bank. And I would like to suggest that we table this to the next meeting so that South Fork Water Board can hear this. Not that they're going to approve it or anything, but that they have, that they know about it and there's some concurrence.
I'd agree with that. If I put the shoe in the other foot and West Lynn was engaging in something, I would have liked to have known as a South Fork Board member.
Well, I don't, I probably only know enough to be dangerous on this. But I guess whether it's in West Lynn, whether it's in Oregon City, whether it's this development or another development, South Fork Water is the provider.
I understand. I just would like the South Fork Water Board.
Does West Lynn come to us if they're putting in a new subdivision? No?
This is not a subdivision. This is a pretty big agreement.
Okay, so.
A contingency with CRW, which has not been in the, you know, we have been frenemies with them, I would say, over in the past. And I just want to make sure that the South Fork Water Board knows about this particular issue before we vote on it. So I can come back and say, the South Fork Water Board heard this, they're not going to vote on it because they don't have a vote, but that they know about it. And I don't have to go to them and say, oh, by the way, we approved this, by the way. I just would like to have a little more transparency.
Like I said, I only know enough to be dangerous.
The only difference, I would say, Commissioner Mitchell, is if the other community, West Lynn, was making an agreement with a third provider as opposed to South Fork, rather than just simply enlarging their own subdivision, but they did something and then they contracted with whatever, Lake Oswego Water or somebody, then I think I would have liked, I would like to have known that as a South Fork Board member. And that's essentially what we're doing. I don't think it's a big stumbling block.
No, it's not.
I think it's a courtesy. I think, I don't see the difference in one meeting and I think it won't have any problems, but it won't be any surprises to any South Fork Board members. That's why I would do it, just as a courtesy.
Bill, since I can't make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion and postpone it until we run it by the South Fork Water Board on the 27th of this month and then bring it back at the next meeting.
Second.
Aye, sorry. Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Obstein.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for the courtesy. I will bring this before the South Fork Water Board and make sure that they're informed. So number nine C, local authorization to prohibit psilocybin facilities.
Thank you. So local governments may adopt ordinances that prohibit issuing psilocybin service centers and/or manufacturing licenses within their jurisdiction. After an ordinance prohibiting the service centers and/or manufacturing is adopted by a local government, the prohibition must be referred to the voters at the next general election. The city commission requests it to decide to be brought forward to determine if an ordinance should be considered to prohibit psilocybin service centers and/or manufacturing in the city limits of Oregon City. If that ordinance is brought forward and approved, this would go on to the general election in November of '24 or consideration by the voters of Oregon City. I provided you some background on Measure 109, which was enacted by the voters of Oregon, creating the program for administering psilocybin products such as psilocybin-producing mushrooms and fungi to individuals aged 21 or older. As of 2020, the manufacturing and consumption of psilocybin was illegal under both federal law and state law. The Oregon Health Association was responsible for establishing the ProDAM and creating guide regulations. Clients would be allowed to purchase, possess, and consume psilocybin at a psilocybin service center and under the supervision of a psilocybin service facilitator after undergoing a preparation session. I also, you know, provided some background related to what psilocybin is. And then, so tonight, this was a commission request to bring forward. So looking for direction from the commission on how to proceed.
So I was looking in the law and I still am not clear, what is a service center? I don't understand what that is.
My understanding is.
Kind of a weird name. Is that where you can go take it?
Correct.
Under supervision.
Psilocybin can only be taken at a service center. So it's a supervised experience.
Yeah, that's not what a service center to me means. So that's why I didn't understand when I read it. I said, okay, what is this? And then the other one is that, so people want to help wherever they can have a facility where they grow these mushrooms or whatever the thing is?
It's my understanding of the manufacturing component.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I requested this be in front of us is simply because I think the voters deserve to have a choice in this. This is part of Measure 109. The first general election after it was approved in 2020, which would have been the '22 general election, I was not aware that it was an option until we were able to vote on it for Clackamas County, which did pass. I do have an article I just want to read from right now that's following the last election. Authorities in 27 Oregon counties, out of our 36, and 114 cities and towns asked voters to consider two-year moratoriums or bans. Among the latter, only two, Phoenix and Jackson County and Wheeler in Tillamook County, authorized psilocybin services. And so for me, I recognize that this is an emerging science. There's science that says this is potentially a breakthrough treatment. But I would just prefer that we wait until further science bears that out. This is something very new. Quite frankly, I don't have that much trust in state departments to deliver on big new projects as we have seen time after time after time. I do not trust them. I would like to see how they roll out this project and maybe we can have that conversation down the road. But another reason I brought this up is because simply our planning staff is overloaded with things being thrown at them by the state. And creating ordinances for something like this is just another thing on their plate. And so this is simply just asking not our own opinions, but whether the voters should have the decision whether to weigh in on whether they want this in their community. And for me, I think that our economic development future in Oregon City lies elsewhere.
To be clear, I mean, we would ask to provide an ordinance knowing that that same ordinance would be voted for in the next election.
Correct.
As provided.
Correct.
That's what it says in the summary report.
Yep, so if the direction was to create an ordinance, we'd create an ordinance, bring it back. The commission, if the commission adopts it, read it twice, goes into effect 30 days. That's sent to the Oregon Health Association. They would not submit any licenses for any facilities in Oregon City. And then we would put it on the ballot in November of '24. And a decision by the voters would be made. If it was voted to prohibit, then the prohibition would stay in place. If it was voted to allow, it would go into effect, I think, at the new year. I think it was my understanding.
So with that summation, I would move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance prohibiting psilocybin service centers and manufacturing facilities in Oregon City per the explanations just provided.
Second.
Before you call the roll. I guess I have mixed feelings about this, not in support of. I mean, I'm in support of having the ordinance, but I have mixed feelings about the thing, period. But I agree with you. I don't want to be a guinea pig for something that's not really proven at this point. About this, and again, I agree with you. This is not something that is going to promote economic development in our community. And I think we have other options other than this. And I wish we could have gotten a moratorium on it because that would have been even better. But. So it'd have to go on the ballot this November?
No, November of '24. So if the ordinance is adopted 30 days after the second reading, we will have a prohibition.
Okay.
Until the election determines what the long-term situation would be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, communications.
Thank you. So the one communication I just wanted to bring up. At our last meeting, we had some discussion, actually at the last work session, we had some discussion about the Clackamas Park Master Plan and reconsideration of the vote. So on August 17th of 2022, staff requested the city commission approve the Clackamas Park Master Plan. So at that time, it was approved by a two-to-one vote. And so the question was, could that decision in August of '22 be reconsidered? In looking at Robert's Rules of Order, which is what the commission is following when they're making their decisions, a reconsideration would have had to have happened that night by someone who was in the affirmative vote. And they would have needed to make the motion. So the reconsideration of that decision based on Robert's Rules is not an option at this point. That being said, a different motion could be made at a future meeting, you know, if this is something that's put on the agenda as to not necessarily reconsidering the previous approval, but providing direction to do something different. So. Got the attorney here to help answer any questions you have.
Well, that's an interesting summation. And I was curious how Tootie Smith brought back a decision that was made on a hotel for the homeless at later meetings, but.
She doesn't follow Robert's Rules of Order.
Regardless of that, that's just a side comment. The reason I want to throw it back is I think there were options to think about. And I've seen the summations and I saw Kendall Reed's summation of what has occurred. and I saw Kendall Reed's summation of what has occurred, but I think there was, there's some better options that I would like to discuss, whether they are not accepted or not. I mean, I still, I struggle with the location of a RV park next to 99, next to McDonald's. I don't think it was ever considered if we could move it to the higher ground, which currently exists upstream of the current RV park and out of the floodplain. And I think it could be, so I'm not saying the plan is bad, and I don't want to throw it out. I want to maybe amend it to try to make it better. So if there's a means of bringing it back for that discussion, whether that discussion leads to a change or doesn't, it was something I would hope we could do. So if I'm allowed to make that motion as some future thing, or tonight, then I would do that. I don't, I'm not sure what the mechanics of that are.
Make a motion, aye, if you wanted, right?
Well, you can make a motion tonight if you want to, or we could put it on a work session agenda, and you could have a discussion about it, perhaps with, you know, people-
If a majority of them wanted-
If the majority wanted, wanted, want to put it on a work session. I mean, I, I think the question is, what are you going to, what is the motion going to be? You can't revisit the old motion. What you would be doing is looking forward, you want to make a motion that the Parks Department brings back the plan?
Feasibility of, rather than the current plan, to move the RV park to the lot adjoining McDonald's and 99, to move the current RV lot upstream to the currently undeveloped and wooded area immediately adjacent to Anstream Side. And that, then the second, the second part of that plan would be to, there's a way to, I've been in discussion on this, to use of pavers that are perforated to provide a glassy, a grassy knoll that is suitable for parking, which was one of Commissioner Smith's concerns, how to expand the parking. So I'd like to revisit some small aspects of the plan, and I don't know where the boat ramp fits into this thing, but, maybe visit some key, just to say, to bring it back for discussion about some key elements of the plan, and see if there's support for amending it. That would be the motion in its simplest form.
I do not want to open the Parks Master Plan.
Well, then you can vote no on that motion.
So you're, you're being very specific about the RV park.
Well, I'm saying on, on, on three items. Movement of the RV park, paving and, and providing for a parking and utilization area that is dual purpose in the current RV park, and reexamination of the boat ramp thing, placement. So those would be the subsets of what I would seek to improve, what by and large is, is a workable plan. You can vote no on that motion.
No, no, I'm just saying that, you know, I feel that we got a lot of community input, and maybe it doesn't totally agree with everything that I thought, but I'm going to support the community outreach, because I think that's important. We ask for that community output, excuse me, input, and looking at the things that the community responded to, again, I was surprised by some of it, but again, you know, that's part of our process. We don't have to agree with everything, but we did ask for it. So, and we got it, and the results were, this is what the community said. So I, I understand your concern, and, you know, if we want to bring it back for that specific item, for the RV park, I would be willing to hear that concern. I, I think the boat ramp is a losing proposition, because we've got our friends at the State Marine Board who have a difference of opinion, and I'm not sure how to, to deal with that, other than, they don't, it won't be on the Willamette. They've already been very clear about that. Not going to happen there, even though maybe wise or heads think it shouldn't be. I don't know how to deal with that. And in terms of, I understand the concern about parking, but I guess I look at Clackamas Park as first being a park that belongs to this community, and second, it can also accommodate some things, but it is not going to be all things to all people. And maybe we do need a little bit more parking, but I'm not willing to sacrifice open space for putting cars on it. So I understand where you're coming from. I totally understand where you're coming from, and if people want to, if this commission concurs to put one or two of those items on a work session, then that's fine. I, I don't want to, I think we need to think about, and where we went, where that process went, not the vote, but what the community said, maybe take a look at that again. I, I think I remember very clearly the wants of the community.
Well, my response to that respectfully would be that the community was not aware that there are possibly optimum, better solutions that they were unaware of, that in fact, they could have RV parking in the upstream area, they could have a dual-use area, which is not only a grassy area to picnic on and enjoy, but also facilitates parking under proper engineering. And the boat ramp is a whole other discussion.
Oh, God, yes.
So, and, and I'm leaning down the road of the boat ramp, and what I think about doing the same thing 300 feet downstream is going to yield a different result. But so I guess the, the motion would be to, for a work session, just to have that discussion with knowledgeable community leaders, and people who know how to facilitate these things, and see if it's something we want to pursue. It's a work session, and it can go further than that or not.
Okay, well, go ahead and make a motion.
Well, I think I did in various forms.
A work session?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Was that a formal?
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's.
We need a second, okay. Further discussion?
So, I agree that it went through a lengthy process, and the comment was made, well, ignore the vote part.
Yeah, let's just, yeah, let's put that-
No, don't ignore the vote part. Two commissioners made the decision for this. That's the vote part. Two out of five spots. So I, I will say this also, when we have a process that says pick picture, but pick between these three pictures, one, two, and three, guess what? People are going to pick one of them.
Right.
And that's what it's going to be. But where were pictures four and five? We, we can very easily steer public opinion by showing them pictures and eliminating things from the pictures. Every government does it. We've gone through that process so many times. It's very easy to do, and it's predictable. It's almost too predictable how it's going to end up. But there are other things to look at that the citizens have not considered. You know, most of the people in Oregon City don't know what it's like to plan a massive event, and will say, well, yeah, it doesn't have to be a park for all people, but what are the people of this town saying? That park should be used for large events. And we've been communicating that by the citizens so many times about how community events are at the top of the, of the focus of this town. We didn't address that at all, and we could have addressed it outside of that master plan. We could have addressed it by saying we're going to deal with parking just beyond that, where this, but, but we didn't do that. There, that wasn't really a consideration. So I, I think the public didn't hear all the possibilities of, of that, so I'd say that.
Can I ask you, so I don't understand what a massive event is.
Okay. If you're going to have even a minimal event, like let's say the art festival, and you have a parking lot the size of Clackamas Park, that's enough to park your vendors and traffic coming in running the event, not to include anyone that goes to the event. That's what I mean. If you had a large concert at Clackamas Park, that parking spaces would not be accommodating. Well, I'll give you an example of, and the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, that's their only other option for a large event. And it's got a minimal parking lot, which most of us consider is pretty large for most of its use. But when we have concerts in the park, we know exactly what happens. Those people park everywhere, and we do the best we can. But we never planned to make that park a massive concert venue. So we never thought about, you know, other than just shared parking on those nights and how to deal with it, how to really deal with that. And it's a mess sometimes. We can plan better, especially if we know we have these areas and these parks, and we have limited choices for large events.
Thank you for explaining that. So there's been a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Mike, have anything? Adam?
I'd be willing to have this conversation. I still support the plan as it was presented to us, so not only out of a courtesy to the commissioners who were unable to be there, but also because I do think that we can have conversations beyond the physical site itself, and how we can be more creative about accommodating more parking. I would like to have that conversation. So recognizing that it needs to come with a conversation about the plan itself, I will support this, but that doesn't mean I necessarily support changing the project as it's been presented and approved, and I want to make that clear.
So I guess I do have a question now.
Sure.
But when does this go back to the group that spent all that time creating this plan? Or are we just telling them that the year that they spent working on it, you're wrong?
Oh, we're not telling them that.
Well, sure you are. You start, if you move the RV park, and you find a way to do other parking, and you move the boat ramp, you, you, you're, you are.
See, I disagree with that, with that portrayal, because if they're not aware of other solutions that may even optimize it, we're not telling them they're wrong. We're telling them, hey, you weren't aware of other possible solutions.
I can't, I can't believe that all of the different pieces of the jigsaw puzzle weren't presented in all the possible permutations over the course of a year.
The RV park was moved around like several meetings.
I mean, I'm, I'm not in, in love with that plan, but the reason I'm not in love with it is they're trying to put too much into that park.
I agree.
With not enough land.
It's trying to be all things to all people, and it can't.
Right. But I, I just have, I, I'm really torn at, at the idea of undoing a public process, that had that much time-
And we hadn't undone it. We're, we're revisiting it, and you can, and you, we can make a formal decision whether to go forward and alter, or just say it stands as is. And I would invite everybody, for those who have never walked those grounds, all of those grounds, please do.
I, I walked it many times during the process of the, of the plan, and I will tell you that one of the things that I personally wanted was I wanted the RV park out of the floodplain.
And it would be if we moved it down upstream.
And I really feel that they should not be the only ones who should enjoy the riverfront. I wanted to see, my feeling was, and again, this is me only, I wanted to see the bank restored, and I wanted to see a more passive activity that people who are in the RV park could access. I don't feel comfortable going down there where it is now. I really don't. It's, 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 I did it anyway because I wanted to walk, you know, and I'm walking and, and I'm next to these people who are like, what the hell are you doing here? This is, you know, this is my space. And I wanted to say, excuse me, this belongs to everybody in, in the town, and if I want to walk here, you know, I can. I think there was a concerted effort by the whole process to look at the RV park, and one of the things we said is, this is how much we're spending all the time to get it to deal. And I know you're talking about moving it out, but I think the bank deserves to be restored. I think people deserve to be able to walk along the river, and the people who are in the RV park can get there. They can still see it, but they don't have to be right on it. And so maybe, you know, we're going to do something environmentally conscious and restore that bank, and, and allow for a passive walking path that people can run on, walk their dogs on. They can commune with nature and be there. They don't have to be looking at an RV. Not that there's anything wrong with them, but, you know, you're looking out at the river, and you kind of get both of the rivers there at the, at the confluence. And I've canoed that, too. And I've looked at it from the riverside, and I've looked at it, and I thought, yeah, we need to move, we need to move the RV park.
And maybe you can accomplish all those goals, you said.
And, you know, I was hoping that we would accomplish all those goals. And like Mike said, I, I'm not 100% thrilled with everything in it, but I think you're right. It's trying to be too many things. And I don't think it's our responsibility as a community to have giant events there. I think we need to size events for the space that we have. And, you know, we, we need to, you know, and I think, you know, again, we need to look at, you know, how we, how we recover our costs when something like that happens. Yes, we do have issues with concerts in the park. They become more and more, you know, more and more popular, and I'm really glad it moved out of our neighborhood, because it wasn't worth, you know, it wasn't, it was fine when it was small, but then it got really popular, and it just wasn't going to be accommodated. There, and the library took care of that. But we need to think about overflow parking for concerts in the park, and that's another topic. So I think we'll just move on and call for the questions, see where we lie.
I thought we were in the middle of the question.
We have, we'll, we'll-
Probably, actually, okay.
You had a motion and a second. You seconded.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
I'm voting aye as a courtesy as well.
Motion passes.
All right. Commissioners, communications. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Um, I'll just remind the public that Saturday, I believe the times are 1 to 5, at CCC is Pride 2.0, the second part of the Oregon City Pride Festival, so welcome people to come to that.
And this is not a city-sponsored event?
Uh, not city-sponsored. It's, uh, it's partnership with the college and the Oregon City Pride Group.
Uh, Commissioner Marle? Commissioner Mitchell?
Just two random thoughts. One, it appears that ODOT is headed down the worst possible road for Oregon City.
Is that a pun?
Yeah, well, I guess it is.
Worst possible road.
But, but it, but it's, um, when we approved the letter-
The values?
Yes, and some of the language that had been changed. There was a phrase in there that I, I thought was a little-
Bushy?
Squishy, thank you. And at my request, it was changed to disproportionate economic impact. If we want to avoid disproportionate economic impact. And this new plan that they're talking about is the perfect embodiment of disproportionate economic impact. It is going to destroy downtown Oregon City, and it's going to destroy downtown Westland, because there's no other way. The only way people, it just made it way too easy, if the only tolling is on the Abernathy Bridge, and-
I thought they were talking about by Stafford Road.
No, they are now talking about the Abernathy Bridge.
Oh, no.
And they have removed the project of the third lane entirely.
Oh, yeah.
It's not saying delay. So it's the worst possible outcome for us, and we owe it to our community to do something about it. And I know Commissioner Savas, County Commissioner Savas, has expressed some of the same concerns. The only other thing I'd just say real quickly, I had the opportunity to spend yesterday afternoon and evening and this morning in the city of Yakima, Washington, which is the same size as Oregon City, and I was constantly observing city buses throughout their downtown area. They happen to be trolleys. They're, you know, they're soft-wheeled trolleys, but that, I set that aside. Just the fact that a city our same size can have a robust local bus system. Just want to throw it out there.
Well, we can thank those city commissioners that voted to get rid of the trolleys, which I know you were not one of.
No, but what, all, all I'm saying is, there must be a way, because they're doing-
Yeah, they were dumb. Let me just say that.
The police department was dumb. They didn't, for some reason, the police department didn't want trolleys. I don't know why.
I didn't know about that.
Well, because it was code enforcement. So when code enforcement got took, that's where the trolleys went, and the PD was like, okay.
Do you want to add anything to what Commissioner Smith said?
No, I think that was a-
Did you come up with a better pun?
I think that was a good summation. We had a C4 tolling subcommittee meeting today, and I'll have further updates. I need to talk with county staff some more about that meeting and clarify some stuff, and I'll have updates at our next work session.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I'm kind of talked out, so I'll keep it brief. I hope that Chavez de Reimer's motion to prohibit tolling in Oregon altogether helps otherwise. This is beyond my comprehension for those, for ODOT. And other than that, on a more formal note, South Fork meets on the 27th. We'll discuss the matter tonight, and we'll discuss the ongoing high cost of construction. And that's about it for me for tonight.
Okay, uh, this passed to- This past two weeks, uh, on, uh, I attended several memorials for nine eleven on behalf of the city. Uh, I attended a press conference this afternoon this morning, uh, basically condemning the vandalism downtown and talking about the fact that Oregon City's downtown was our, uh, living room, and that that's not how we treat our living room. I asked all the people in attendance who were business owners to look out for one another and please call nine-one-one if they see any suspicious activity, and I strongly suggested people get cameras. Because we had another incident down there, and it's kind of getting cumulative, and I know our police department is on top of it without any evidence of who did it, and maybe there are cameras in the area, I don't know. So that's, I, I really thank the police department for jumping on that. It's just a shame that people feel the need to destroy things, and our elevator included. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to see about adding to our agenda in the future, the very end, is some thank yous, uh, from the commission and maybe myself, but I also want to add to that. Uh, she's not here now, but I want to thank the Parks Department, and particularly Melissa and her crack staff of volunteer, her staff and the people that were here for the summer on Concerts in the Park. I attended every single one of them but one, and, uh, it went well. Uh, we do have to educate our public a little better about the fact that the blue containers are not for, are for, not for recycling and not to throw away stuff because we could be saving a lot of space, but I thought that any incident that came up, um, for instance, we were trying to access an outlet, and it was still locked. Uh, somebody was there within five minutes to open the outlet and make sure that could be used, so thank you to their, to, to Melissa Sebastian and all the summer volunteers and the regular staff, and they did a crack job, even though they were down to one truck. Um, I also want to thank the, um, library staff for their ongoing support of city activities. Uh, I also want to thank, um, Garth Fullerton for the training I recently received. He did an excellent job, and, uh, I understand a little more of what he's gone through, uh, and dealing with our, some of our patrons, and, uh, he deserves that. I also want to thank, um, the public work staff for helping with the Seventh Street cleanup, and, uh, as I drove up this afternoon, I saw a whole bunch of garbage on the side of the road by the library that wasn't there an hour before I went down the hill, so seems like it's an ongoing effort, and, uh, I have been assured by the manager of the South Fork Water Board that he promised me he's calling you tomorrow, Michael, so if he does not call you tomorrow, I want to know about it, because I got a, I promise, I promise. And then I also want to thank the, uh, finance staff just for all of their ongoing work and keeping all the, the dollars where they go and their excellent reports. Um, I am, I'm looking at them a little more these days. I see them and I open them, and also the Community Development Department staff, um, for helping me out when I call up and ask them a really dumb question like, hey, what's going on over there, because everybody's asking me. And thanks you to the rest of the staff. Everything that you do is important. Um, thank you to Jacob, and I wanted to say, did you, did my letter get in the packet?
The what?
The letter that I just wrote. So we received a letter that was in our packet from a, a constituent regarding houselessness and homelessness, and I responded, and I wanted to make sure that the commissioners got the letter that I sent out to the person saying.
How'd you make that happen?
Part, oh, okay. I was hoping they were going to get it tonight. So I did respond to Ms. Brooks regarding her concern, um, and assuring her that, um, her comment was basically, and that in summary, that we were bringing homeless people here and we were building shelters, and I, um, responded with, uh, information with the help of, uh, Aquila, uh, Herd Ravage, and, uh, the police department to get the correct information to make sure that she understood what the city's obligations were and what the state law is. And that's tough because we've got a lot of state regulations, and so I appreciate your bringing that up about one more thing that we need to not be doing, and I have expressed this concern. And also the last thing is I've responded a couple of times to, uh, comments regarding the Housing Advisory Committee that Governor Kotek has convened to things like, well, let's just open up the urban growth boundary, and that way we'll get more housing, which I said, that is a bunch of BS, and that does not work. Um, so I'll be, I'm responding to some of those things. I've reached out to the League of Oregon Cities, and I've reached out to, um, several of the other mayors in the area to get some of the concurrence on these particular issues about, again, um, the overreach of the state in imposing lots and lots of things on the cities when we can't really manage it, and we're trying to keep our cities up and running. And there is some, some, some sympathy, um, but we need to keep pounding that message to our electeds. So anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that we could, your response, basically, is that something we could get out more on social media and some basic message to the community because?
You mean that we're building these things and?
Right, a response to some of the things that are coming down from above and that we can't control, because I, I'm sure the rest of you are getting calls and questions about it, and especially if some of these things come up in meetings in the future, I don't know how many conversations I want to have about it, and we need to, the, the public is very clearly coming at us on these things and saying, what the heck's going on?
I could work with.
So I think if we could do some sort of basic, you know, messaging out that, okay, these are the things we can control, these are the things that we can't control.
I could work with, uh, Mr. Lehman on that after the, um, and the last thing is that October seventh, the Youth Advisory Commission and the city are putting on a mental health fair, and we're inviting all students and their parents and other extended family members to attend. We're going to have, uh, at least ten to twelve participants dealing with all access of mental health and come and join soul flags. We're going to have a coloring table, so if you like to color, we're going to have some stuff for you to do, and, uh, we hope people stay inside the lines, so.
And a therapy dog.
And some, and two therapy dogs.
Yeah.
So we're working very hard, and I want to thank Jared for, he's having to soldier this a little bit by himself, but we're getting there. And last but not least, um, thank you, Jacob, and thank you to Shawna Kaufman for helping get the meeting together, and thank you for the, um, pizza. So, um, we're.